Ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hello, everybody, and welcome back. So nice to see everybody. Hope you all had a good summer. Joe, we have some exemplary people in the room, two of them.
We do. They're both exemplary. Yeah, I'm very excited to introduce our paraeducator and teacher of the year to all you tonight. Once a paraeducator or teacher is chosen as a district selection, they participate in a statewide competition with paraeducators and teachers of the year throughout Connecticut. We got some really, really exciting news recently on both of our standouts this year. Both have made it to the semifinalist level of the state competition. I don't know the last time we won. Jen had an interview a couple of weeks ago, and I know Sean, I think you're heading up to Hartford next week or so. So good luck to both you guys on that. That would be awesome. The only thing, we started like the, the, oh, you know what moment hit us today. And we're like, I hope Sean doesn't get teacher of the year because I think it comes with like a sabbatical and you go start.
He travels for a year.
I hope he come in second place.
It'll cost us money.
Yeah. But it really, it speaks to the accomplishment and professionalism of, I'm sorry, the professionalism and character of both Jen Palmeri and Sean Sarafino. They've done Monroe, very proud. We've recognized both Jen and Sean previously, but I just wanted to give you a chance to get to know them a little bit better. So I'll start with Jen first, and then Jen, once I'm done, we come on over, we'll take a nice picture. We have a little certificate for you. But Jen began her career in Monroe at Massey High School in the Life Skills Program in 2006. In 2009, she followed her true passion, which was early childhood education, and went to Font Hollow, which is where she remains today. In addition to being a paraeducator, Jen also co-chairs the Arts and Imagination Program at Font Hollow, providing before and school, before and after school activities for kids. Those who nominated Jen consistently emphasize how caring and compassionate she is, saying that Jen always goes above and beyond. Lee also talked about Jen always putting the needs of her children first and went on to say Jen spreads positivity, positive energy everywhere she goes and makes a huge impact on Font Hollow and the entire community. So we're happy to have her, we're lucky to have her. It's my pleasure to introduce Jen Palmeri.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Sean's pretty good. Sean's okay. Sean, Sean actually started a year before Jen in the Monroe Public School System, 2005. Sean started his career and is still a third grade teacher. I don't know if you were a third grader your entire career, but he's a third grade teacher now. Fourth for a while, that's what I thought. I was looking through your personnel file the other day, and it said Sean Sarafino, fourth grade teacher. That's what he must have been hired for. In 2016, Sean was recognized with the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. That same year, he was also recognized by the, in the state of Connecticut, by the Connecticut Science Teachers Association for Excellence in Teaching Science. Sean repeatedly gives back to the community. He is an adjunct professor at Sacred Heart, teaching undergraduate and graduate courses to pre-service teachers. During the course of the school year, Mike meets with all the new teachers for a year-long orientation process. During that, we've always, at least as far as I know, Sean has been a presenter at those meetings, talking to the group and walking them through data-informed decision-making and data-informed teaching. So he's fantastic. His parents also said some, not your actual parents, although I'm sure they said nice things about you too. But parent recommendations detailed how Sean radiates positivity and enthusiasm and how happy their children are to have him as a teacher. And Kelly said it best, it was quoted in the paper. She said, "When I want to be inspired, I visit Sean's classroom." And it's very true, I've been by the classroom a lot, there's always amazing things happening there. It's my pleasure to recognize Sean Sarafino as our teacher of the year.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Joe.
Sean and Jen, as I said, you're more than welcome to stay tonight, but you do not have to.
I tried to turn it on, thank you.
All right.
He's already sticking around for five hours every day.
Joe, I realize they're great, but is it because we have the student governor, is that why?
I know, maybe, you know, the student governor was from Monroe.
Thank you, everybody.
Under Report of the Chair, I just want to let everybody know that at our next meeting, which is September 16th, we're going to have the first of the facility studies reports on the condition of buildings. So I have reached out to our first selectmen and the chairs to Town Council and Board of Finance to let them know about the meeting, ask them for, they're going to start slowly building that master facilities committee towards the end of the year. So to ask them if they wanted to attend our next meeting and be here for that. I just want to include all the stakeholders from the beginning. And so, and Joe, we could probably get, can we get a notice out to our PTO?
Absolutely.
Our PTO residents on that. I'm just trying to think of the stakeholders, and we want to start in on that. Because the condition of our buildings, and then our second meeting in October will have the demographic study. So Alan's not going to want to miss that. So, and then we'll get, towards the end of the year, we'll get the third and final presentation. But that's coming up, so I want to let everybody know that's an important meeting to make. There were no signups, any public participation from anyone, hearing none. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Any questions on the minutes? Our last meeting was July 15th. Any concerns from board members on that, hearing none. A lot of warrants and wire transfers, we're going to talk about that a little bit. Any questions for Ron or Joe on any of those? Right now? Okay, Joe, we have some more hires, replacements.
We do, yes, I have four on here. I won't, you see the names, Sarah Kaczynski at Font Hollow, Alyssa Noche at Jackie Hollow, filling a year's leave. Jennifer Robb at Massey, teaching math, and Rebecca Witkowski, Special Ed at Font Hollow. All of them will be at our next meeting with all of our new, all of our new teachers. So you get to put a little name at the face. That orientation program that I was talking about before, we'll meet that afternoon, and then they'll be invited here, and they'll be our exemplary people at the next meeting. Introduce them right at the beginning of the meeting. So everyone can put a name with 12 or 13, Mike?
12.
12, 12 new teachers.
Uh, maybe 13 now, because we didn't win the last committee.
I thought, yeah.
It'll go up to 13.
Okay, great, and thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis, can I have a second? Jeff, any further discussion? All in favor? All the i's are unanimous, thank you very much. We're going to move to the reports of the committees. Steve, student reps, next meeting or October?
Yeah, next meeting.
You think? Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you for that. Any reports from board members? Christine, you met today?
We met with policy tonight, so they'll come up in the next meeting. We'll go over all the, some new, some just minor revisions.
Okay. Any other reports, I know it's early in the year, but from committee members?
CES is having, they've renamed the schools to Oak View.
Oh, right.
So it's happening, they're opening on the 21st.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move to the report of the superintendent. Go ahead, Joe.
You got it. I'm going to start with Jen, who's going to give the special education update.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Jen.
Okay, so, welcome back. We had a nice smooth transition from a Special Ed perspective. I know everybody else is going to talk about their, their different buildings, but we had a nice, it was a nice opening. So I talked in July about our end of the year when we talk about enrollment, and we finished, after our students graduated, we ended with 611 students. So in the month of July, we had three students move in, but we also had three students move out of districts. So we were net there. And then in August, we had eight students move into district who have IEPs. And we had 10 students who we either dismissed or moved out of district. And I believe the number is, we had eight students move out, and we had two that were dismissed from services. So that brings us to 609 at the moment. Okay, so that's our enrollment. Some exciting news, I think it was shared with you at one point by Joe, but our community program is merging with Oxford Public Schools. So we are going to be the Monroe-Oxford Community Program. We would have started together already, but unfortunately, because of all the rain that happened on the 18th, Oxford hasn't started with us, so they start on Thursday. So they bring with us four students, and a special education teacher, and a paraeducator. So we're really excited for that collaboration. So that will begin. We're going to give it a couple of months, and then we'll have the teachers come and do a presentation for you, talk about all the new things that they're doing. So that's really exciting. So last year at Stepney, our identified student numbers were increasing. We had some students move in, we had some services that needed to be covered, so we had special education teachers from the high school come over after hours and help us out. We just couldn't do that this year, so we had to post a .5 position that we are looking to fill to assist the Stepney, the Stepney School. So that's happening right now, I just wanted to let you guys know about that. And then in regards to financials, I didn't do anything too specific this time. Obviously, we're looking good right now, I'd love to look like this all year long. But we are currently encumbering everything that we need to, and that will happen through the month of September. So next month, I'll get into more specifics about each budget line, but overall, we're obviously fine right now. That's it. Any questions?
Can the Oxford kids get here from Oxford?
So as of Thursday, apparently, they can. I'm not sure exactly how that's happening, but they're starting Thursday, so hopefully, all good. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we were really fortunate in Monroe that, where 34 was blown up, that didn't impact us for kids. It definitely impacted staff getting here, and obviously, we have staff who are impacted, right here in Monroe, actually, as well as folks that live in Oxford, getting to and from school right now. But Cottage Street was actually technically opened for the first day of, for the first day of school, but we got the message so late Wednesday night. We went with our original plan, where we were picking kids up at different stops on Cottage Street for the first day of school, but by the second day of school, everybody was at their regular bus stop. So it only affected a handful of kids at each school, so literally, four or five at each school. Just wanted to talk about convocation, thank you. I know Dave was there, Dennis, Greg, and Jerry were all there, able to make it. It's always a very inspiring start to the school year. Dave kicked it off by welcoming all the new teachers, or all the teachers back for the new year. We were also joined by our first selectman Terry Rooney and Tony Scott. Terry also gave a greetings in the beginning, and then Tony was there to present citations for our teacher of the year and our paraeducator of the year. The tradition that we started a few years ago, and it's probably something we'll do as long as I'm here, and that is, we started bringing out at convocation our incoming seniors with the incoming kindergarteners, it's really cute, class of 2037, by the way, kindergarten class. Last year, I asked the, last year, I asked the seniors to share their favorite memory. This year, I asked the kindergarteners to share what they're most excited about coming into the year. It was really, it was really cute. Most of them, you know, centered around making new friends and stuff like that, so it was cute. Sean really gave an awesome, you know, the teacher of the year is always one of the keynotes at, at our convocation. He gave a tremendous speech with, it was filled with humor, but it really touched on our vision of the graduate competencies, as well as, you know, emphasizing the role that AI is going to be playing on us. A lot of things that we've been talking about a lot over the past couple of years. So that was our start, we had a really nice, it always starts well with the bus company. Like I said, our buses were able to maneuver around town, and, you know, the first couple of days, and then they were at Massey plenty early enough. The little kids, it gets a little slower as the second and third tier goes on, but seemed to go pretty smooth. So I'm going to turn it over right now to our principals, just to give a quick little update about their schools. And I understand the elementary principals are going to show a force of solidarity and go together.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Hi. So we just thought, instead of pressing repeat three times, we were so similar that we would just all share together. So we broke it up into what we did, welcome back the students, and then what we did with staff and faculty, and what we did to engage the community. So students at Font Hollow, we are welcoming back 685 students, 25 of them are new. Stepney is welcoming 510 students, 17 of them are new. And Monroe L has 415 students, and 10 of those are new. I think a lot of people don't realize what happens behind the scenes at elementary schools over the summer. As soon as those hallways and classrooms are waxed and ready to go, the teachers are in there setting up their classrooms. They can't wait until it's, you know, time to welcome back staff. They get there, they, they're making sure that those spaces are welcoming for the students. So all of that happens, and then we were ready for the big day. The kids have no idea that anything even changed by the time they come back. All the classroom teachers are making sure our mood meters are posted in their rooms, so we're going back to ruler, remember when we recognize, understand, label, express, and regulate our emotions? And, and all the classes right now are setting up classroom charters. So that means they're talking about the ways that they want to feel, and they're developing those classroom communities for everybody to talk about the feelings that they want to have in that classroom, and then how they're going to support each other having those feelings.
So I'm going to talk about our faculty. I would say overall, it was a light hiring year, except at Font Hollow. Lee had hired five new teachers, one in kindergarten, two in first grade, a third grade teacher, and a special education teacher.
And.
And.
An assistant principal who is here today. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So that's awesome. At Stepney, we hired a part-time speech and language pathologist, a full-time counselor who was there part-time last year, but we increased, so thank you for that. So she is full-time. We hired a new armed school security officer, and then two new custodians, new head custodian, and then a new nighttime custodian. And I'll get a little bit more to that in a minute. And then, as Jen mentioned, I'm in the process of hiring a special education teacher. In all buildings, we hired supervisory aides, it was part of the budget last year, so that's been great for supervision, paraprofessionals. And overall, we're almost staffed. Lee and I are still working on a math interventionist in both of our buildings, but we'll, we'll get there. Another great asset to the district are, or two, I should say, are Kara Tanner and Evelyn Tabory. They have come in and just made their mark already. We had great PD that they hosted in our new phonics program, as well as new math, illustrative math. And they really came in, they're both highly, what should I, what's the word? Knowledgeable is the word I'm looking for in both of those, and, you know, the staff really values that knowledge. So we had a great, great three days of PD. And we just wanted to say a thank you to our secretaries. They are behind the scenes all summer, registering kids, ordering supplies, greeting new families, making them feel welcome, so that was great. And finally, I mentioned maintenance of facilities. I think, you know, I really want to recognize them for all three buildings, but especially for Stepney. I had the privilege of meeting many of our maintenance of facilities staff this summer through interviewing. And let me tell you, they are a top-notch group of gentlemen. So Dan Crofsek oversees all of them, and Sean Corner actually said it perfectly. He said, "Dan is able to capitalize on all of our strengths, and that's why we work so well as a team." So at Stepney, we hired Chris Mammon as our new head custodian, who worked here at Massey before. And they worked tirelessly all summer at Stepney, as well as across all buildings. But our building really looks amazing, it just needed a little TLC. We had custodians from Massey come down to help in the summer. So I just really wanted to highlight that, because it really was a team effort of perseverance, positive energy, and they just all worked together. So, excuse me, thank you. And I think I got everything.
I think so.
You're up.
So I will be speaking about community and family engagement, and we know how important it is to form a partnership between home and school. And so to kick off the year, each of the elementary schools created a welcome back video. Each video was centered around a book that each school uses as a mentor text. I think at Monroe L, it was "The Day You Begin" by Jaclyn Woodson. At Stepney, it was "I Am Human" by Susan Verde. And at Font Hollow, it was "Be You" by Peter Reynolds. And the themes across all the books are similar, it's about kindness, accepting differences, being the best version of yourself that you can be. And so to kick off the year, we sent this message home, and families love it. We got a lot of good feedback from it, and it was a nice way to open up the year, because not only is it teachers involved in the video, it's all support staff members as well. Ladies in the office, the custodial team, you know, our school resource officers. So everybody is involved, and it's a nice way for the children to reconnect and see the familiar faces. Additionally, we are going to continue to send out our weekly communications. Each of us sends something out on Sunday, and it gives parents an idea of what happened the last week at school, and also what they can look forward to in the coming week. We had a special welcome back day for our newest members of the community, our kindergarteners. They got to come to school a day or two early, just kindergarteners. They played together on the playground, they had a sweet treat. They got to drop off their supplies, say hello to their teacher, and again, build that familiarity with their new school. And we are also, the PTOs in each building are going to be hosting a welcome back to school social, and it gives us an opportunity to recognize those folks as well, because they are perhaps our greatest partners in education, and we wanted to formally thank them for everything that they do to support our students, our teachers, and our families. And I think that's it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Dennis, you have something?
I was, had the pleasure of being in each of your schools before Election Day and on Election Day. Your schools were blown up. Your custodial staff, especially yours.
I know.
Stepney was, I was like, there's no way you're opening in a week.
Yep.
I think somehow, somewhere, we got to kind of videotape what the custodial staff does in the summer, because it was amazing.
Thank you for that. That's why I made such a big deal, because they do work so hard. And we had, I should highlight, we also had summer help, too, that was really great. So college, high school kids that come in and help, so they were part of that team effort, too. Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, how are you?
So the fine faculty of Jackie Hollow Middle School welcomed back 765 students to our two campuses this week. And that's just about the same number as last year. So we're holding steady with middle school numbers. We just had nine students, new to district, join us this year, and that was offset by 11 students moving away. We also welcomed two new teachers. And we are now fully staffed in non-certified positions, which is the first time in many Septembers for us to be able to have that accomplishment. So successful summer. In classrooms, the first two days, our first two fast days, teachers and students have been recreating our school culture, which we have to do fresh every year, as we're a different group every year. Excuse my raspy voice, I think I might back to school cold. We have to establish safety. We have to establish safety, we have to give and earn respect, and we have to establish the routines of personal responsibility. We say, we, first we connect, and then we expect. Oh, thank you, that's my tea. This is what makes up Lions Pride, which is our school motto. We're also helping students move from their summer screen time hours back into the school rhythm of connection and learning, doing that as gently as possible. But it's time. Today, students had the choice to eat lunch outside, as well as in the caf, and we're going to continue that all the way through October. I went out to chat with our seventh graders, and one told me, "I miss some people that I didn't know I missed them." And honestly, we miss them, too. So we're glad they're all back. A big feature of this year for back to school is launching our one-to-one Chromebook initiative, which is backed by Board Policy, thank you so much for that, and supported by our IT department, who were absolutely amazing this summer, working tirelessly, getting all that ready to get, not just what they usually do in the summer, but getting a district device into the hands of every middle schooler, which we're up and running with. We're using software called Go Guardian, more appreciated by the teachers than the students at this time, which helps our students stay safe and stay scholarly online. We're especially making use of the tab limits, which is helpful for kids to stay focused, not 17 tabs open at once. Just, I want to give a special thanks to our outstanding PTO, who already has the first social event planned for students. It's the very popular bonfire and dance at Castle Hill Farm in Newtown. That'll be later in September, and that's coming up for students. So aside from a few, there were a few stubborn lockers that the custodians had to attend to. Other than that, the buildings and grounds were in great shape for back to school. And our school and home partnership worked well together this year, especially, for students to have a smooth start to the school year. We're very glad to be up and running. And off we go.
All right, I sent a, I sent a text out to everybody, to the five of them today. I said, "No need for slides, no need for pictures." So when you guys get mad at me right now, and he said it in front of the board members.
But he's not going to.
If he didn't listen, of course, he has pictures.
But you're not going to sing those. Steve, are you going to sing those?
I, no.
Oh, really?
I know how to clear a room. Just sing. It was really, it's so, I'm sorry. It was really for just ease of, you know, kind of giving you a, you know, words are one thing, but I'm a visual person, so. Pictures, I can't really just hold up and show you. So as every principal has mentioned, the custodial staff, office staff, you know, the doors don't open on the first day without them doing what they need to do. And Massey's custodial staff, despite being down, you know, either because people were moving to different buildings or what have you, they did an outstanding job getting the school ready. The office staff, in terms of getting information out. My welcome back to school video was a little different than the elementaries, because I had a fun time recording myself, explaining the cell phone policy and the research behind it, et cetera. So probably a little different reception than I'm sure they got on theirs. But, you know, again, I just want to echo their words. The custodial staff worked tirelessly throughout the summer to get things open. Obviously, not just at Massey, but at other schools, so I thank them as well. So our enrollment's 1,065, we have 25, 29, excuse me, new students. We probably law, I say lost, probably moved out. We're about eight higher than I think we were last year. I think we're 1,057, so our net gain is about eight students. But what you see in these pictures, and I can't not highlight the bottom right, because, you know, someone thought it'd be a great idea to bring a Discman to school, because, hey, we can't have cell phones, let's have a Discman. I don't know who that is, but, you know.
It's my son.
No, it was hysterical. A teacher sent me that towards the end of the day, and I couldn't not include it. But, you know, it's been an exciting start, and here's more pictures. And I think, you know, a couple of teachers put it to best, and, you know, this one student, you know, sorry, one teacher, today, my students were more lively, engaged, and collaborative than they've ever been. They really talked to each other, it was an awesome day, and today made me excited about the year to come. And to be honest with you, I was watching, not only in classes, but in between classes, like where kids walking down the hallway like this. And you know what, they weren't. And I didn't include the picture, but one teacher sent me a picture of their cell phone cabinet with one phone in it. And I'm like, is that the teacher's phone, are they doing it? A student actually was so not interested in their phone, they actually left the phone in the locker. Now they came back for the phone. But, you know, again, in terms of, you know, are we doing kind of the right thing? I think we are, and I thank you for your support on that, because this next teacher, oops, sorry, jumped to athletics. My seniors talked to each other today more than a class of seniors did collectively all of last year. You know, so I'm sure, you know, you know, Justin, I don't know how your daughter's feeling about it, but the general consent, now, we're three days in, but the general consensus is, you know, that the instructional time gained and the fact that kids are talking to each other just tells me we definitely made the right decision in getting the phones out of the hands. So, you know, athletics from, from, you know, Brian Horgan, who's probably down either at the volleyball game or the soccer field right now. You know, tryouts began August 19th, we had 300, almost 350 student athletes registered on 11 teams. You know, worthy of note is our girls soccer team did go and participate in a jamboree this past weekend, honoring the victims and families of 9/11. Our football and field hockey teams also had jamborees this past weekend. But tonight, we have boys soccer at home, girls volleyball at home, those are going on right now. Field hockey is at Watertown. Girls swim opens Thursday, girls soccer at Joel Barlow. Cross country's not until the 10th, football opens at home next Friday against Wilton. Boys golf, actually, they've had three matches already. Actually, I'm sure they're still not playing, because it's pretty dark out. So they're either 2-2 or 1-3 right now. They've had some fantastic scores, though. Steve Sentimentis shot a 36 at Whitney, if you've ever played Whitney, that's good. On the same day, Andrew Peachey shot a 39, Andy shot a 39 against Brookfield the other day, too. So the golf team's looking good, we do have a new coach, Chris Overcash, science teacher is coaching this year, but a good start for the boys golf team as well. I did want to just. I did want to just, you know, highlight, last year we came with some curriculum changes. I just wanted, you know, Unified PE, uh, it meets for the second time tomorrow, uh, emphasizing again, you know, the cooperation between, you know, um, uh, our student athletes, but also, you know, their regular ed peers. Uh, you know, it's co-taught by Justin Scarpatti and Terry Strohs, PE teacher and a special ed teacher. Obviously, they're, they're focusing on communication, team building, and problem solving. We have twenty-three enrolled this semester and twenty-five next semester. So again, thank you for approving that as a new course this year. Uh, you know, and, and again, I would say, you know, if you want to be inspired, you know, you go to Sean Serafino's class or you can come here and go to Unified PE. Uh, the financial literacy was a hot topic last year. So we did, if you remember, we took the personal finance class. Janelle DeSetti came, I don't know if you remember, but we all, we kind of changed the personal finance, which was a year-long class, down into a semester class. That's the one that kind of satisfies the Connecticut state requirement. It's a half-year class. The good news in this, um, we're, I hate the word servicing, but we have approximately the same number of students enrolled in our eight sections this year as we were doing in our full year classes last year, but it's taking half the FTE. So what that did enable us to do this year is you also approved the AP Microeconomics. Now, when we did course requests, we had no idea that we were going to have so many requests for it. We had so many requests, we actually have two sections of this running this year. So again, it's, it's always nice. You approve those things. You don't always necessarily hear, you know, about the follow-through. So I'll keep coming back to you with, with this information because these are what you kind of, you know, gave us the go-ahead for last year. So, uh, I just wanted to follow up. But we do have, you know, forty kids in two sections of AP Micro this year. And the plan is to, uh, I'm sure if Allison hasn't reached out to Mike, we'll probably come forward with the macroeconomics and do micro and macro in opposite years. So in a four-year span, kids have opportunities to take both of those classes. So, uh, that's kind of coming down the road. Uh, for, uh, students, we have our senior barbecue tomorrow. If you're not doing anything around noon, I do okay on the grill. Mr. Little burns the hamburgers, so get one for me. No, I'm just kidding. But we'll be grilling for the seniors tomorrow at noon. Please stop by. Uh, we do, uh, the PT, Massey PTC is sponsoring that again this year. You know, we've got DJ Castillo, the yard games, come by, play cornhole, play can jam, have a burger, have a hot dog. Uh, Mike Anino, a parent, donated a grill that we use. It's a charcoal grill, uh, you know, so his, his daughter's a senior this year. Uh, so he donated that, so stop by. Uh, we have back to school night tomorrow night. So if you, if you really want to spend the day at Massey, you can, uh, from noon till about eight-thirty tomorrow night. I'm gonna, so you might as well come by. Um, but no, we've had a really good start. We're excited about it. Uh, obviously, the big change this year is really the cell phones. Uh, that's going to be an ongoing conversation. Uh, I wish Arit and Shivani were here to, to, to give their input because I'm sure it'd be a little different than mine, at least at this point. But, um, you know, again, classes are lively and that's a good thing. So.
One question.
Yep.
For the financial and economics, do you do a complete test of knowledge so you can see how much they learned in that semester? Being in a close, take it.
Do they? It's a great question. I can come back with an answer. I don't, I don't know if they're pre-enclosed, but I'll ask. Uh, Janelle's teaching the financial literacy. I'll ask her.
Just wanted to talk about some of the work that was done over the summer as well. And actually, I think every single, every single principal already touched on it. And, um, I can't say enough about Dan and his staff and what they did around here. I mean, people need to understand, you know, as soon as summer begins, every single piece of article of equipment and, uh, furniture is taken out of every room. Every room is, the floors are clean, stripped, waxed, um, before stuff starts to go, to go back in. Um, in addition to that, there was a number of other projects. And I'll just highlight a few things. And if I miss any big things, I think I hit the big things at, at each school. But, um, system-wide, all the playgrounds were inspected for safety. Uh, we had fresh mulch put back down on all of them. I think we had to re-mulch the one at Fawn Hollow after the rainstorm because a lot of that got, got washed away. Um, besides that, we had, this was a year of, uh, if you needed firewood, you could have come to Monroe Public Schools. There was a, a lot of tree, uh, tree cutting, uh, limber, um, trimming, I'm sorry, tree removal and trimming throughout the entire district. Probably the most was at Stepney and Monroe Elementary. I don't know if you remember, in the beginning of the summer, I don't know if it was June or if it was early July, but my wife and I took a walk down, uh, the, the trail. It was a Saturday morning, we took a walk down the, uh, the, the trail from Pepper Street, and there was just trees down everywhere there. It was clearly a microburst had come through. So I took a ride up after that to check out Stepney. And Stepney had just gotten completely decimated amazingly. Nothing hit the building and nothing hit. We had trees like down right next to playground equipment and everything else. But, you know, um, you know, luckily, nothing was, none of that stuff was damaged, but major, major, major tree work done there. Um, I don't even know how many trees they, they took down, probably over seventy trees. Um, there, and I'm not talking about small trees. I'm talking about like really big trees. Same thing over at, uh, at Monroe Elementary. They didn't have quite the same amount of damage, but they did have, uh, we had the, um, tree company come out and identified some that, you know, were starting to die and posing a risk. So we had a lot of those taken out. Uh, at Massey, uh, a lot of, uh, floor tile repair and replacements in the hallways and kitchen, a lot of concrete work done. There's a stairwell that comes to the back of the STEM entrance that had to get, uh, new concrete. And then the stairwell going down to the gym, was that finished for today? Is that?
I think it's open now.
Is it open now? Yeah, no, they were, they were rushing on that to get, to get that done. Uh, Jackie Hollow, a lot of work in the, uh, kitchen area, um, a lot of brightening up, repainted the kitchen, replaced the ceiling tiles, painted the grids on the, on the ceiling. Um, we've been looking at a way, Jackie Hollow's cafeteria really poses a, kind of a logistical issue, getting kids in and out for lunch there. So we're looking at different ways to maximize the space in the serving area to help the kids get in and out of line more efficiently and, you know, get their lunch and move on. Um, we also added a, uh, a window to the nurse's office. Fawn Hollow had sidewalk repairs. Um, we replaced, uh, the playground retaining wall and fence and added a new custodial shed, actually, at each of the elementary schools. Um, at Monroe Elementary, we do what we do best by building other rooms, by dividing rooms in half. So at the, uh, we created, we had a, we had one large, I mean, we have a couple of, uh, what were there, three preschool rooms before this?
When I first started, there were three, yeah.
There, and, well, now there's four. And we, uh, and we did that by cutting a room, cutting a room in half and adding a door on, on one side of this. We had to, but it was, it was the larger of the rooms. So we were able to split, uh, two teachers into each half. Um, added a new sidewalk that connects the side of the building to the front of the building. Also installed some fencing and did some paving around the preschool drop-off. And finally, like I said, in addition to the, the tree work at Stepney, Ashley touched on it, Chris Mamon was hired as the new head custodian over there. Um, came over right before the summer started. Um, and just did an amazing job, working with Dan, working with, um, like Ashley said, we sent some staff down there. We repainted Stepney. The, uh, the halls are bright, the, the library. We put all new ceiling tiles in, painted the grids on those, um, put all black trim and painted the, uh, the other trim black in there. So it really pops really nicely. It looks really good. So if you were over there before it was finished, if you went over after, it's, it's really nice.
I'm glad you put it up.
So, yeah.
You look at Stepney, I was going to accuse you of buying new land.
Yeah.
The trees came down, it looks like it's twice the size.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. There was a, there's a house, um, if you're coming from like, you know, Benedict's up Old Newtown that way, the house right before Stepney, there was all trees right there that, all that, I mean, you're right in the guy's backyard. So we planted some new, we planted some arbor viady along there as a, as a barrier. Um, they did, Stepney, I think, is now complete around the, the perimeter of the building now with, uh, sidewalk through that. Finally, it's like a multi-year project that we got done. And then to put the final touches on, Ashley bought new classroom signs for each door. So no longer do we have like these antiquated old sayings for, you know, uh, this is the learning center, or this is whatever, you know, we have, you know, what rooms are called in two thousand twenty-four. So once again, a huge thank you to our entire, um, maintenance staff and Dan and his crews. And the last thing I have is, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, but as we close the financial books on two thousand twenty-four, you'll see the year-to-date budget report in the budget transfer link in the, in the, uh, on the agenda. Um, you'll see that we have roughly a one, a one-point-one million dollar surplus from this past year, which is, uh, a little over, I think, one and a half percent of our entire budget. So, um, ninety-eight point, almost five percent of our budget was, was spent this year. We do have some requests that we want to bring to the Board of Finance with the one-point-one million dollars. I want to share that with you before I go to see them, um, in a couple of weeks. So, uh, I just, I just pop them up here. So, you know, of the one-point-one million dollars, some of the things that we are, uh, looking to try to pick off. And Mike, I'll let you, um, you do a way better job. I practiced a couple of times and I said, Mike, I'm just going to turn it over to you at this point.
Kim, you can sit down now.
Yeah, Kim, you can just, uh, you can laugh and make fun of Mike. No, I just, uh, three hundred thousand dollars towards the, uh, the reading program based on the right to read legislation.
Sure. I figured it was September, we needed to talk about phonics at some point. So, um, you know, we've been talking about this for two years now. And, um, when we started the waiver process, the programs that were put in front of us were not programs that we thought were the best choice for, for, for our students. Um, since that waiver process, as you know, they gave us more choices, more of a compendium of resources. Um, and I would say ninety-nine point five percent of the school systems in Connecticut, you know, are going with these programs now, you know, are either the box, big box programs that you didn't agree with, um, or these compendium of resources. Um, so what we have and what we've done so far is, we already had HIGRDI in place for our phonemic awareness. Um, phonics, we did, um, the YouFly program, which we, um, were able to purchase and have trainers come and do a full day of training for all our K-three staffs on phonics. And the response has been extremely positive from that, for that. They love it, they love the program. Um, for fluency, which we talked about decodable, as kids being able to read and become more fluent, we have been purchasing geodes. And the last piece is the comprehension vocabulary piece. And that's the piece that is like, the big box ones were pretty much about, and the other little pieces, like the phonics, phonetics, were sort of add-ons. And we weren't happy about that. So now there's two programs that we are looking to pilot this fall. And the choices are Bookworms by Open Up Resources and also Wit and Wisdom. Um, so what has happened is, remember when, when we came to you and said, this is going to cost us about a half a million dollars for us to do this? So in the course of the last two years, we've picked off a couple of things with grants, including the hundred and ten thousand dollar Right to Read grant that we got from the state because Kim and myself and eight others went through monthly, all-day trainings. And we were able to receive a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And we were able to pick up, um, our YouFly, our fluency off of that. Um, and actually, the cost of what our pilots, because believe it or not, they charge you to pilot their program, will be. So where that leaves us is about three hundred thousand dollars. Those are the quotes that we have gotten for us to either do Wit and Wisdom or, um, Bookworms. So knowing that that's going to be a cost that we're going to have to do because state legislature says by, you know, July of two thousand twenty-five, you have to have one of these programs in place. Um, and we saw that we had the, uh, surplus. I said, Joe, this might be, you know, that's going to be quite an impact on our budget next year, so.
Yeah, so what we talked about was trying to pick it off maybe with this year's. It's going to be a one-time, you know, I mean, there'll be some ongoing expenses, but, I mean, the big one-time hit is going to, is going to be for next year. And if we can pick it off with surplus money, I'd much rather do that than come out of the gate because three hundred thousand dollars is close to a half percent of, uh, an increase, you know, right out of the gate. So it's going to be one of the things that I'll ask the, the Board of Finance to, to fund. The other things are pretty simple. We have, um, some unexpected special education outplacement. So we would ask them to possibly put another two hundred and fifty thousand in the, uh, in the contingency fund that they've established for us. Um, we have been lucky, we haven't used that fund before, but I know we always, we get nervous of the volatility, you know, in special ed at any time. So we'd ask them for that. The other thing is the lighting, um, system in the auditorium at Jackie Hollow. That's on the five-year capital plan. So we're hoping to pick that off rather than go through capital, go, uh, you know, pick it off right there. That was original with the, uh, with the building, and it's reached its end of life. And then the last thing was, we have, um, we had that storm last week. And our field, when we get really hard-driving rains, um, you can watch it and fast-forward on the camera that sits on the, on the fieldhouse. And you could watch the coconut rise and then get deposited on the, on the, uh, on the track or on the sides of the fields. And then the guys have to go back in. We have, we have some things that we can, you know, mix it back into the field turf with. So we had that huge rainstorm, and I actually went there that night. And I, I texted, I think, Steve and Dan and, uh, the head custodian up here, Dustin Perkins, and I said, hey, good news. It looks like the field's in good shape because, you know, it would always pick up and it would settle on the sides or on the track. Well, I think we had so much rain, it picked up and it just, it went right out into the, into the aquatic, into the, the stream behind Massey because there's very little infill left. We had someone come in. We did have the, uh, I just want to make sure this is clear. We did have actually two people come out, um, to make, ensure that the field was still safe. The G-force ratings are plenty high enough. They said, even if you had no infill, the work that you guys did on this field to put the underlay in, you know, would make this field safe. But we do need to, we do need to replace the field turf infill, the coconut infill. Um, and that's, we got a quote of about, I think, the quote given yesterday was forty-six thousand dollars. So I would ask the, uh, the Board of Finance to put that aside for us. And that's something we might also, you know, if we can use this money, run it, no matter what, we're getting, we have to get this done now.
Um, we, we do have a purchase order into hitting this year's budget. And we'd like to, uh, if possible, get that.
And it could possibly be a curma claim too.
Yes.
We could possibly go back to our insurance company and see if they'll, they'll help pay for it. So if they do, then we'll just, we'll just give the money back.
Mike, going back to the reading program.
Yep.
This three hundred thousand would also satisfy the waiver, right?
Absolutely.
So would we be okay with that?
It would be awesome, absolutely, because it's one of the approved programs.
And it's materials and training?
It's materials and training.
That's all. Any questions for Joe at all? Dennis?
Just one about the reading program.
Mike, yeah.
A while back, we had a pretty vocal parents group talking about it.
Yep.
I don't know whose house they live in, but is there any way of getting back to them so they can see exactly what we're doing, you're doing?
Yep. Yep, and, you know, in part, and Kara Tanner, who is the new, Kim, the new EIL for ELA, the communication this fall about the pilot is, you know, going to be put out to parents also to know where we are with the whole Right to Read legislation as we get closer to knowing what our timeframe is about. We actually have a call next week with the vendors.
Anything good?
Yep. Just one question. Was that specific program, you mentioned about we having to pay for the pilot, is that just, was that across the board, all the programs, or was that just that one specific?
The two, the copy, the copy and vocabulary program, they, you pay for the materials, that's just part of the process and the vendors.
You're like, if trade books are involved, they have you buy those books that you're using for the pilot, so that's what you're paying for is the materials that you're getting. And then you get to keep them.
That's true.
Right.
Anything else for Joe? No? All good? Okay, we have no unfinished business, so we're going to go to a new business, which is the 2024 budget transfers that we saw. Joe, I just had one question, too, with Ron. The most significant line item to me was obviously building, building systems and repairs was over $100,000, spending some money's around. Was that as a result of everything that we heard?
Well, yes, yes. You know, a lot of it was what we could encumber and pick off, you know, encumber in last year's budget, we did. Some stuff, you know, came about as the, as the summer went on, and we just couldn't encumber it as of the year. Like the infill. I was looking for any way to encumber that and hit last year's budget, and there was just, you know, it was an August expenditure. The timing wasn't great from that perspective, but.
Right. No, I agree.
Yeah, so some hit, you know, some was hitting the 25 budget, and some, you know, was encumbered and did hit the 25.
Yeah, and I just want to say our kudos to you and Joe and the administrators, because you had all this happen over the last year. You had to move around, you know, $120,000 and emergency repairs and building facilities, and we still had a $1.1 million surplus. So I just want to say thank you, everybody, for watching. The taxpayer money, and it's a great thing to be able to go back to the town and say, "Can you, you know, pretty please give us, give us some of this so that we're not using it later on or offset it for next year's budget?" So just thank you for keeping all those pennies in line for us. So thank you. Dennis?
The field, the field repair, does that give into the town's federal fund request, or do you request further hip replacement?
So I'm not the person to, yes, it will, but right now, you know, when talking with Chief White, it sounds like Monroe might not be getting a lot.
Yeah, we haven't qualified much.
Just stick it out.
We're on the wrong side of the river.
Or the right side.
For FEMA requests. You know, because we are, we are in a different, you know, different county, we're in a different region, Demus region, so it's.
But the field, I know we talked about this a little bit last year, the field is definitely safe to play on, and while we're waiting for that, so.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, that was the first thing we, that was the first thing we asked. I think the question in the future, I think when we replace the carpet, I think we still have a few years. It was 2016 when the, when the field was installed, and it's still in pretty, it's in pretty good shape. But I think the question is going to be, is are we going to want to stick with the coconut infill? I think at the time, there was a lot of, a lot of nervousness and anxiety around the rubber infill, which I think a lot of that has been allayed, and my understanding is I don't think, I don't think you have experienced the same problems with the rubber as you did with the, with the coconut.
Yeah, it seems like they're filling every single year, moving it around.
Yes, yep.
Well, that being said, are you going to, is it going to be a coconut replacement?
This will be a coconut replacement for now, and then I think when we replace the carpet, we, at the time, we asked ourselves if we want to, you know, stick with the geofill or do we go back to, or do we go to the rubber?
That's in our capital plan for a few more years, so, the whole thing.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 budget transfers as presented at tonight's meeting? Christine, suggested by Dennis. Any further discussion, questions for Joe or Ron? Hearing none, all in favor? Eyes are unanimous, thank you very much. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Can I have a second? Christine quickly raises her hand. All in favor, unanimous. Good night, everybody.